Good evening, everyone. It's December 3rd, and we're going to be calling the meeting to order. And we have Jen White here. We have Beverly Washington, Adrian Johnson, Ian Thomas, and Mitch. I'm gonna say your name right. Schindback.
That's good. And then online?
And then online is Jay Whiteloff, Mike Whitney, Sean Corcoran, and I'm here. And I'm sorry. Andrea Ackerman is here.
On the phone.
On the phone. Okay, so I know this is an important meeting. It's gonna be the election of the officers. So we will begin, I guess, with the chair position. And I guess we'll have a motion to appoint a chair.
To take nominations.
And take nominations, okay. Start, we'll start with nominations.
And does that start now?
Yes.
Okay, I nominate Beverly Washington. Washington.
Second.
Second.
Point of information. Bev was also elected to city council. And I was curious to know, are you still a city councilor? Are you resigned from your position?
Not yet.
Is there any intention of resigning from your position if you should be elected chair?
Probably so.
Probably, or? Second.
I don't think that is part of this, right?
No, it isn't. But I'm asking because it is a concern.
I will perform my duties as chair like I have in the past.
There you go. All right.
So I haven't missed a meeting yet.
All right. Well. All right. We're gonna make a nomination, man.
Why don't we just get on with the meeting?
I'm nominating myself.
Second.
What are you standing there?
No, can we discuss it again?
I don't have a discussion.
Okay. So are there any other nominations? Is there any discussion?
Oh, yeah. Well, nominations go three times. Just to close out the question, sorry. That's always wrong. We wanted to be in support of Bev being chair, but given the fact that she's also still serving as a city councillor, I'm not comfortable with a person serving two roles like that. The Board of Ed and the City of Groton are technically competing departments within the town budget. So I believe there is a conflict there, and it's a disenfranchisement for city voters that voted for a city councillor. And it's a disenfranchisement of people who voted for good, you know, focused representation on the board side of things.
I'm raising my hand.
So.
So what he has done, my hand was raised.
Thank you.
So I have concerns. You know, so I would withdraw my nomination if there was an assurance that there'd be a resignation from the city council. Should Bev be chair?
Okay, I hear our hand was raised.
Yes. Warren, um, there's nothing that prevents Beverly from running for both roles. Everybody who voted, voted in, for Beverly. They didn't vote for Board of Ed or City Council. They voted for Beverly. So if she won, she won. I think that, and there's nothing written anywhere that says she can't run for both roles. And I think we should just get on with the voting.
I would respond to that, just saying that it is an unique situation. The City of Groton is a unique entity. There's not a lot of case law on the books about this as of yet. But that doesn't mean that it's. Just because it hasn't been addressed doesn't mean that it's correct. So.
Hand is raised again. I think the town charter, I think the town charter allows this.
The town charter does not speak to it.
There's nothing in the charter that doesn't allow it.
I see.
There's nothing. We checked on this before. Does anything else says that I can't do both? And I didn't say I was gonna do both.
Uh-uh.
I said I'll perform my role as a chair if I'm elected, as I've done in the past. I've come to most meetings unless I was in Mississippi, visiting with my dad, or went to try some vacation.
And I see Jen's hand is raised.
I'd just like to say something. So I'm not encouraging upon Beverly's time, and I don't mean to speak for you, but if she was elected to both positions and she feels she has the time to dedicate to both roles, we all know she's retired and she's always been committed to everything that she signs up for, then that's her prerogative. So if she's dedicating her life to community service 24/7, that's her choice, her options. And as long as she's fulfilling her obligations, I don't think we should dictate how she chooses to spend her time. And if that bridge does come where town charter is reviewed or something happens, then we'll cross that bridge when we get there. And that's like how I see it.
Everyone has a right to disagree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have concerns.
Yeah, no.
And I think there's a conflict.
Yeah, it's good.
I can't support it.
I think I saw Mike Whitney's hand. Then I'll get you.
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering, how does voting proceed here?
I didn't hear that.
How does voting proceed?
What do you mean, Mike?
So like two nominees will be voting on this in order of nomination. Or is it like a paper ballot? I mean, it can be for those online, but I just wondered how we actually are going to vote.
I think you vote on it per person.
Maybe a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But who's first? Like the second person nominated is first? The first person behind first?
Who's just voted there?
Or do we just say who we are voting for, I guess?
Yeah, you could just say who you're voting for. That's what I saw at the town council meeting last night. They just said who they were voting for. There were two nominations, and they went them out. Jen, who do you vote for? And that's what they did. All right, thanks. You're welcome, man.
And then Adrian, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I do support you, Bev, as being chair. I also understand and support Ian's point that there might be at least a perceived conflict of interest in budgeting when it comes to the town if you're advocating for the city and the Board of Ed, two big draws on the budget. So I agree with, or I should say I understand, you know, that perceived conflict. So I think that exists. That being said, I do.
I didn't say I wasn't going to resign. I just don't want to be put on the spot that, oh, you're gonna resign. I didn't say, and you know I'm gonna do it.
I heard what you said. I just wanted to clarify my position that I see, I understand and agree that it is at least a perceived conflict of interest because we're all competing parties for the, you know, taxpayers.
Right, right.
More harder money.
Yeah. But technically, you can do both. Realistically, you can't. I'll leave it at that.
All right. You ready for the roll call?
No.
Okay. I will start with Jen White. I'm gonna go around the room.
I don't count Beverly.
Beverly?
Mm-hmm.
Your turn. Adrian?
Beverly.
Ian?
All right, Thomas.
Beverly.
Mike Whitney?
Beverly.
Jay Whiteloff?
Beverly.
Sean Corcoran?
Beverly.
And Dr. Ackerman?
Beverly.
Do I get to give the gavel to you now?
We never had a gavel.
Use that fist as a gavel sometime. Congratulations, Beverly.
Thank you, thank you all.
So do we have to adjourn this meeting?
No, we have to get a vice chair.
Oh, yeah, we gotta get a vice chair. Right. You do this part, though. All right.
Open up nominations for the vice chair.
I'm nominating Adrian Johnson.
I'll second that. Any other nominations?
Mitch?
Mike Whitney.
Okay. We got the second, Adrian, and Mike. Any other nominations? Going once? Twice? Three times? Okay, nominations are closed. Any discussion?
I'll just say that I think Adrian's done a fine job. And as a vice up to this point, and look forward to seeing him continue the work.
Mitch, you wanna say anything?
I think it would be nice to give someone else an opportunity for that role. And I think Mike could probably do an excellent job.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. I'll start with you, Mitch.
Mike Whitney.
Ian?
Adrian Johnson.
Adrian?
Adrian Johnson.
Myself, yes, Adrian.
And we heard Andrea, too.
Adrian. And Jen?
Adrian.
Adrian. Sean?
Adrian Johnson.
Jay?
Adrian.
Mike?
Adrian.
And Bev, Adrian. Okay, so that passes eight to one. Adrian continues to be the vice chair.
And Secretary.
And Secretary.
Why should we vote for that person?
All right, yeah. Okay, so we have a vice chair and a chair.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
And we'll keep working forward and moving the, we'll keep sailing that boat.
Sailing that.
Sailing the boat. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And I have the second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of adjournment at, what is it, like five fifty?
Two.
What is it?
Five fifty-two.
Five fifty-two.
Apple.
Now, have a. Okay. The board members wanted to know, you know, what we need to do to move forward with our financial department. And thankfully, we got Rita now, and she's been a big help to us.
That's right. That's good.
So, good to, gentlemen. Are you willing to take questions as you go along?
Sure, whatever works is fine. All right, so I'm just gonna use this to kind of walk through. I'm not gonna walk through the report, but I'm just gonna walk through the presentation. I kind of pulled out what I thought were significant items to talk about. If you have a question on something else, we can look at it. So just to highlight, to scope, the period, the limitations, and then the results and recommendations. So we looked at six major areas. Charter and policy, compliance, accounting procedures, and internal controls. Review of expenditures, review of budget amounts and expenditures, more of a comparison. Expenditure reclassification from budget to grants, and review of budgetary practices. So the time period's focused on basically fiscal '23 and fiscal '24. So I'm sure a lot has changed since then, but that was the period that I was asked to review. So again, the report is based upon the information that was provided. If there's additional information, then that certainly could change what's in the report. So the recommendations are based upon the information that I had and the completeness of that at the time. And then, so the information was provided after the draft report, which wasn't included in this report. So if that's, needs to be followed up on, that can. So the recommendations are provided with best practices, the benchmarks. So I aim pretty high with this. A lot of times, there are ways to implement a recommendation that is, will still accomplish some of the control objectives. May not be the best way to do it, but with compensating controls would work. So internal control related, they should be addressed immediately. And then the operational efficiency for best practices would be lower on the list if you were prioritizing them. So for the recommendations, just kind of responded a little bit indirectly to one of the questions. So that they're kind of labeled. So the question was more related to how to kind of monitor. I think you've already started, and you mentioned the spreadsheet, which is the best way to do it. So everything has a reference number. So purchasing one, so allow for status tracking. And then, based upon that spreadsheet or chart, I would show the recommendation, the reference number, the description, the type, you know, internal control or best practice, and projected implementation date, and then status. So it's kind of a normal way if you were looking to kind of just track it. So I don't think it was specifically in the draft, but it certainly could be updated to identify what's internal control for best practice. So that could be added to each of the recommendations. internal control for best practice. So that could be added to each of the recommendation if that is helpful. So review of the board, the charter statutes of board policy. So the budget transfers, there is a statute, it's at a pretty high level, as far as required to, the board, this body is required to approve transfers between objects, and objects meaning salaries, benefits, purchase services. There's basically nine categories. Management can move, or administration can move in between, but anything that's in those major categories should come to the board for approval.
Do we have to approve transfers within the object, or just between?
Between is the state statute. Your policy, your actually board policy goes a little bit lower level. I kind of measured you against the statutes, but your board policy has a lot more categories than the objects. So I don't remember specifically what they include, but, so that's really what's gonna drive it, or best practice is that it's at least communicated to the board, but it wouldn't be an approval type thing. So I see it done multiple different ways. That all transfers are at least brought to the board as far as information, and then the transfers that are required, there has to be a resolution and actually action taken on those.
Thank you.
So again, I look, a lot of when I do this, because I do a lot of the administrable audits, I look at what do I need to make sure you're in compliance. So if I just see a board resolution saying we would do transfers, $100,000 salaries to benefits, that's what I would need to see in the minutes to be able to evaluate compliance with the statutes. So that's the maximal level. Again, you can, I know policy review is a normal part of a Board of Ed process, so again, you're actually requiring approval at a much lower level by board policy. So if that's something you want to reevaluate.
Okay.
You do watch it on video.
So, sorry, just wanted, so to clarify, you're saying that we're applying at a lower threshold than what would be recommended?
Well, lower than what the statute is.
Right.
So the lower the level, the better, from a monitoring standpoint. But I'm just, I just measured against statute because your budget, your general ledger wasn't set up easily to monitor at the level.
Okay.
That's in your policy.
I was just, yeah, I was trying to clarify, because you're using the term lower.
Lower level, so it's.
So are we doing better than state statute, or are we insufficient to state statute?
Doing better than the statute.
Okay.
So you're looking at, there's nine categories for the statute, conceptually. If you look at Exhibit 1 in the report, that's gonna give you the statutory category. So I think I started.
So, page four, what do you think?
Forty-two, well, forty-two of the page number.
It's in the back, in the digits. In the back with a handout.
So if we look at the budget category and the objects, so this is the level the state requires that transfers be approved by the Board of Ed.
Okay.
So anything in red means the transfers want to approve. I don't think any transfers, there's no transfers in the general ledger, and I didn't see anything in the minutes. So, conceptually, and this is town, board, same thing, transfers are supposed to be approved in advance. In reality, the world doesn't always work that way. So the best case is that they at least get approved at some time, you know, prior to the audit being issued ideally, because it is, it is a compliance test that I do from an audit perspective. So every firm is different, but it is a compliance thing we look at. So we look at a report by object, and is anything over? Or if we look at the budget transfers, if there were budget transfers, and make sure they're approved.
The board is getting that on a regular basis now.
Yeah.
It's reading.
You also look at an object.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right, any other compliance thing is more around issuing debt. The Board of Ed doesn't have any authority under statutes to issue debt, so unfortunately, a lot of accounting things have changed. So things that they call leases are not really leases, they're really financing agreements and that type of thing, or notes payable. So the reason for this is that for towns that maintain tax exempt status, tax forms need to be filed, so usually the town would kind of be part of the process, the approval to do it. It's not, it's not allowed, it just, it needs to be approved by the town, so all the paperwork gets filed, and the town wouldn't lose their tax exempt status on their bonds, because the debt wasn't considered and.
I have a question, I'll put it, Joe. Jay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a little behind on this. Getting back to the budget transfers, I, one of the things that prior directors of finance and schedules is that they simply don't make them. They allow the accounts to show where the issues are, so that they can take management actions. And so I was just kind of curious, is the state statute saying that every time an account goes over, the transfer has to be made, and therefore the board has to vote on it? My concern is that if you're coughing up these accounts every month, unless you're looking over all the transfers that occurred in prior periods, sometimes it's difficult to pinpoint where the problems are, so you can take action, such as putting on controls on purchasing, or controls on hours, that sort of thing. Does that make any sense?
Well, if you take a look at Schedule 1, you'll see it's very high level. It doesn't say anything about line items, so the probability, unless you have an emergency, this stuff is gonna happen in the last quarter of the year, that you may need these type of transfers. And then, those transfers would get recorded in your general ledger, so you wouldn't lose track of those. So you would see that you transferred $100,000 from salaries to benefits during the year. So usually, it would show original budget, transfers, and then, you know, amended or final budget, which is what, if you look at your audit report, that's what shows. So again, these eight categories is the level of monitoring. So salaries between different accounts certified, or you've got, the example that I'm sure you can verify is PERS. So PERS are in professional services, you can't find enough, so you have a salary line. You know, that one becomes a little bit more complicated. But those are the type of things that happen, but until they're over in total, so if you look at salaries at $51 million in '23, until you go over $51 million, you don't have to worry about the transfer. So it's not as, like, every month you would have transfers.
Well, at the end of the year, we had a, I'm sorry.
It does not relate to the statute. Again, there could be transfers that's done by administration, because they just wanna track, or not. Or, like you said, a lot of times, they let the accounts run, so you have, you can see it, but the transfers then kind of allow a management of making sure, do you need to put a spending freeze in? So if you're transferring the budgets, then you're seeing what accounts are needing help, so.
And that's exactly what we've done, Joe. We really feel like we wanted to keep better track. We've had a couple tight years, and the principals have gotten very used to looking at their budget and realizing what they, you know, if something has gone over, they need to adjust. So they've been working closely with Rita, and that has been helpful.
Okay.
And same with Central Office.
Right, yeah, just allows you to react a little.
Right.
Sooner and decide if you need to do something or not do something.
That's right.
Are you all set, Jay? Mike, were you gonna say anything?
Nope. Okay.
So we're moving to the next slide, 12?
Right, so that was the.
Thank you.
Again, the new slide, yeah, just to talk about the transfers, that the current board policy is more restrictive than the state. And if you get a monthly report, that would show you how things are tracking, and if the board does need any action, or ask a question, if something doesn't have much left, then it's possible that you would need a transfer in the future. And then ideally, transfers, if it's something specific, whatever, software or server book, and you need to do something, and there wasn't enough money, you already bought all your servers, then you would come with the quotes or whatever documentation to say, we need to spend $80,000 and replace this server, or a bunch of servers.
Or boilers. We've had a problem with them.
Or boilers, yes. Having, in my district, same thing, just kind of when they go, they go. Nothing you can do.
You gotta fix them.
Have to fix it, yeah. Now, the weather, for sure, you can't wait. So that's another good example of.
Just to quickly close out on that, someone reported, there's a recommendation here, says you recommend that the board revise policy 3160 to include all the object labels as required by state statutes. It's on page six.
He's on the bigger book.
Yeah, okay.
He's on slides.
I see.
What page are you on?
Page six in the report.
Yeah, I'm on slide six.
That's the one I stole you.
Right, so, again, yours might go a little bit deeper, but I guess I was recommending that you, it'd just be clear somehow that you're at least hitting the compliance with the statutes.
Okay.
So just to consider to review it.
What number was that, Ian? So I'll write it down.
3160. This one is that we did.
Yeah, it was.
Using our code. And there was a lot of discussion about the level of detail that we wanted to report it on. And there are some different opinions on that. Some of us did want to go deeper, and go more detailed. So we'll take, we'll take over that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's a board decision, so the recommendation again is staying at what's required, and the board certainly can have different levels than what the state requires.
Thank you.
Mitch?
Out of ignorance, I'm gonna ask this question. Are there any ramifications of non-compliance with state statutes?
No, other than a potential recommendation, a management letter comment from the auditors, I haven't seen one.
Okay, thank you.
So, Joe, are you saying that this policy 3160 does not align with the state statutes?
I think it's much deeper, so you really can't see. So the recommendation, I think, was just to make sure your policy, you could see that you're in compliance with the statute.
Okay.
And if you want to go deeper, then that's fine. But at least to make it clear, here's the first level, and then we're gonna go into salaries, and we're gonna manage it at a lower level than that.
Okay. Jay?
Based on other districts that, oh, based on the districts that you've reviewed, what do you see the more restrictive that the board has put in place, or just following the statute?
It's more following the statute from that board action for transfers. Again, I see a lot more communication, like, so that the policy may say that all transfers will come to the board.
Uh-huh.
You know, the ones that don't have to be approved, but they would all come to the board.
Uh-huh.
So they were aware that these transfers were done.
Okay.
But as far as the, where the board action, it's normally just following the statutes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Quick follow-up from Rita. So in the last board meeting, when we were going over the financial report and the transfers, you had added a level of detail. And also, like, the terms and definitions were kind of moving around a little bit on those, because we used some different terms. We had the function codes, and we also included reporting on transfers between object codes in the last report. Is that correct?
Well, I've been following the policy of reporting on function. Object is a higher level, like you said, but I can bring all, if you guys want, all of them to come to the board?
I have, maybe I missed, missed what you were saying during the last time, because I thought you said that you had included some just for reporting purposes, of like more detailed, like, with them with function codes.
Well, I'm talking about including codes that were changing, that aligning better.
Yes, the object codes that were changing, what was brought to the board is what's in the policy, which is by function. If there's a change in function, if the transfer is between functions, it turns to both approval. Okay, so I can provide all of the transfers, all of the transfers that are in between, like the school will say, the transfers fit the house here, but they're in the same kitchen, those are not coming to the board.
But they're managing it better at this level.
Correct.
And knowing more.
Yeah.
Practice is a good practice.
Correct.
We don't need to do that. We don't need to do changes.
We don't, but, you know, it's really up to you, but they're.
Right, and there's no action that needs to be taken. It would just be information from the board if there's no action.
There's no action that needs to be.
Right, it wouldn't be a part of the report.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
14, where are we at? Is that where you're headed, Joe?
Yep. So for purchasing, again, part of what it is, we just kind of looked at some transactions. So for A to the one test, that we didn't have adequate documentation to demonstrate its property bid. This is one of the areas that I think we got information after, but the town had said the draft, they needed to move forward, so some of that could be addressed. So, so that was for two of the purchases out of the eight. So purchasing kind of is, if you look at the report, it's just not centralized, and I think that's really what will help a little bit. And I think, you know, building grounds was kind of a bigger area, that they were kind of functioning on their own. So, and then textbook, again, bid waivers, emergency happens, there still is a documentation that it's not bid, because it's an emergency, and that all makes sense. You got water pouring in somewhere, you don't stop and bid it, you just fix it, and then, but somebody should take responsibility for waiving the bid. It's justified. So again, I look at stuff from the auditor side, because that's what I do. So the best practice is someone, it just protects everyone, said, okay, we need to do this, it was an emergency, there was water, fell in the hallway, so we got somebody here to fix it.
We had a lot of those that year.
Yeah, I've seen in the prior years, you had a few problems with water, so.
We had a lot of water.
All right, so the recommendations, again, we're getting at just retention and central locations. I think, you know, that was a lot of the problem, and it was difficult to find what I was requesting. And again, I was requesting stuff from a year or two ago. I think establishing a central purchasing helps to manage this process, and it could create some efficiencies. Using the purchase order system, I know the district's looking at new software. You don't have the greatest software, so some of this is software dependent. But electronic purchase order is kind of where everybody is almost these days, which is with the requisition, all that, just keeps control of it, the bidway reform I mentioned, and then just compliance with the policy, which is just some of this documentation. So payroll recommendations, so the number after that is the number of recommendations in the report. Again, I'm not listing them all. So the first couple, the restriction of rights is very common, and a lot of this comes down. So the first couple, the restriction of rights is very common, and a lot of this comes down to staffing and that type of thing. But it is an internal control problem, and it's something that I have in a lot of my clients, where, and you will see the same thing as in accounts payable, with the person payroll should just be a processing function. All the data should be put in, you know, except for like the hours, but the rates and those type of things. It's a segregation of duties issue. Proper approval before payroll is processed. The payroll person was doing it, and it really wasn't being formally reviewed, just to make sure it made sense. The production review or payroll change report, that's another, the internal control, that's a compensating control. If you don't have some of the other controls in, that somebody can review that report and see that this pay rate was changed from X to X, and that, yes, HR authorized that change. Efficiency, the school lunch program still has its own tax ID and its own payroll, and it's very inefficient to run, the way you're trying to manage it for W2. So just recommending consolidation, it'll just save a lot of time and effort. So back, way back when I started, the school lunch thing programs were kind of audited separately, and some of these had IDs, but that goes back...
Way back.
Forty years. So most of those have been just merged under the district ID for efficiency.
We did that.
Got it, Mitch?
Totally agree.
I'm brand-new here, so let me ask a stupid question.
No, no question.
I read, I reviewed this report, one of the questions I had was, who processes the payroll clerk's pay?
She would process her own. But if their salary is kind of... And that's the issue, that she would have access to change her own rate, as well as anyone else. So that's where the comment is coming from. So that's where the review comes in, so then if someone reviewed it, make sure... Not just her, but the rates are her same. But that's where the controls come in, this change report would show that. But every payroll person processes their own, because it's just part of the batch.
Okay.
We actually have two people working together, and Rita is reviewing everything, and HR also gives us the data to put in, so we've got an organizational system.
Right. Right, but the control always HR doing, now, someone just needs to match up the HR approval, because, again, if someone's going to do something wrong, they're not going to tell you. It doesn't matter what HR told them. So that's where the change report comes in, or Rita reviewing it, big picture, seeing if this makes sense. Why is it a million dollars more than last month? All that just helps.
Do you have anything else, Mitch?
I don't know if you're going to get into it or not, but in the draft report, I read that there were 50 to 60 employee timesheets, which are manually entered by the payroll clerk. And what's different about those 50 or 60 people, why are they... I wouldn't expect you would necessarily know the answer.
I think it's a program, I want to say daycare program, something like that, it's an off-site...
Was that the treatment?
Well, that's a true answer, we're working on getting everything in front of them.
Yeah.
We can get it away from the timesheets, absolutely. It is, I've seen other places where there are a couple of programs that may still do the manual, and because front line doesn't, whatever system they're using doesn't accommodate, you just have to look into how to accommodate it.
Right, again, go back to my comment, I aim at best practices, so nobody should be key in timesheets. So, but there are reasons sometimes that they are.
Okay.
I didn't have a problem with it, I was just curious.
It's just a good question. Program, so that's...
Dan has a question for you.
So once again, I'm going to look for your expertise in other districts. Do you see them moving to like an ADP, like, to process and not doing it in-house and just sourcing it? What have you...
There are a few board of eds, board of ed payrolls are very complex. There's a lot of different type things, not that it can't be done, but it is...
But mostly it's in-house, is what you've seen?
I'd say the majority, I've seen on the town side more recently, them moving to outsourcing payroll. But the board of eds usually, you know, are a few that do have ADP, but they're more using whatever their accounting software is, because it's an automatic interface. But it... I'll just say the world is different since COVID, so if you're going to make a change like that, you really got to have people available to manage some process like that, just because of the complexity and then the size of your district. I mean, no matter what payroll system you change, it's going to be work, but when it's outsourced. The only good thing about the outsourcing is you have no power here, your payroll still gets processed. You know, so there are a few advantages if you can get it to work. But I definitely would talk to a lot of other districts, I don't know all your experiences, but it's...
My experience with a district this large, it's so complex. I've been getting calls when I was at, when I'm from ADP, and I explained how many employees they had at minimum. And I said, oh, we can't do that. And basically, they're just data entry, they're not doing the calculations of the teachers. It's mainly the teachers that are differently calculated than anybody else out there.
So it's like we have to give them a feed fire under.
Right.
Yeah, so we're still doing the work.
We're still doing the calculation.
Yep.
So, yeah, it'd be a big job.
Right, for sure, yep. All right, HR, kind of related to the payroll comment, that normally is to see the HR department enter employee rates, and the payroll person being locked on about... And I know they initially calculated them again, but just took the risk from the audit side, is they can change them, even if they don't or are not supposed to, it's a risk. And then, again, the compensating controls, that other report to HR should be reviewing that, that all the changes that were made were authorized. And this probably, I'm going to guess, happened, maybe happened naturally, just that HR normally would process workers' compensation claims. You'll see a recommendation, you had a person that was here for a long time, and they did a little bit of everything. So you probably ought to rearrange that anyway as part of a...
Restructuring.
About retirement.
Retirement.
And retirement, yeah.
All right, accounts payable, again, it's the same concept as payroll, restrict that they shouldn't be able to add new vendors, because that's the risk of malicious vendors, and... Same with voids and reissue checks, it's a segregation, or again, unless there's some other compensating control in place. Building and grounds, this is where it was mentioned, that from the AP side, it was a little bit complicated, because the purchase orders were submitted with the invoice and not ahead of the invoice. So there was no evidence of approval, that type of thing. Cash receipts, the lunch program, revenues were being recorded based on the amount deposited versus the registered records. And again, there's kind of a, you know, material weakness type situation, because if you only record what hit the bank, you don't know what you're supposed, what was supposed to go to the bank. Even though it's an extreme case, I did the investigation in New Canaan, where the two lunch ladies stole half a million dollars, it was over a bunch of years. They were just recording what went to the bank as revenue, and they didn't know what they should have had. So it's a critical control, not just at school lunch, but any time there's a cash receipt, that you would have the support of what should be deposited versus just booking what, recording what actually got to the bank.
Was that what we were doing? We were recording what was deposited and not what was on the registry?
Right, right. The entry was really just off the bank statements, and I thought, again, unfortunately, I've seen that a lot of times, where you just get the bank statement and say, I got $300,000 in deposits, so that's my revenue. But you don't know if you should have had more than 300, that's just what made it to the bank. So to have the expectation, I call it, so if the registry report says they collected X, then that's what you would expect a deposit to be.
That's detail, right?
It's the same.
Cashiers checking out the receipts that they add up to the money.
Right, exactly, so that's something to look at there. School rental, just think it was a small amount, just to formalize the record-keeping for buildings and collections. Got a great policy, require people to pay in advance, I like that, not everybody does that. So that way, you're not chasing them. But I don't, the record-keeping wasn't as clear as it could be. Again, it's a minor issue in the big picture. So financial reporting, I just recommend that the board get the actual financial reports from the software. If there's some additional analysis that helps facilitate discussion, that'd be a higher level. But again, this is probably the auditor made, like, I get all my boards, I get the general ledger reports, and I may get something else that helps people understand, you know, what it all means. But I think it's important you have all the data. Part of the board's role is a monitoring role, so you should see everything and then ask questions where appropriate.
Just a quick question for the district side. So the code software we have now that we're using, it doesn't have, does it have that sort of function to it, where it can, the report can be extracted?
The last report I gave to finance and facilities attached to the actual reference report.
Okay, great.
I think it was the report that I gave the first year, it was 385 pages long, so I didn't provide that level of detail. So I provided the functional report, which is only five pages long, but the balances match, expenditures, expenses, balance sheet.
And the gravity detail report is a bit of an electronic, or it starts in electronic?
It starts in electronic, and I put it into the major categories, but I didn't do the PDF of my account, but it's still only 35 pages long, so...
Yeah, I would recommend that, normally, even if it's by line item, it might be 15 pages.
Yeah, this one was huge, so I ran it by function in 35 pages. So that's what I included in finance and facilities report.
And then I recommend, just because the board is responsible for all their funds, and at least on a periodic basis, that the board see the other funds, so they understand what's going on with the school lunch program. And yours, at least a couple of years ago, is in very good shape, if you have non-lapsing, departmental defense. So I don't know that you need that monthly. But I think you should see some of the other information, because the board is really responsible for all that, all those different activities, not just the budget. Again, I make, that's a recommendation I make to everybody when I do these type of things, and I've done quite a few of them. Journal entries, just looking to kind of standardize the supporting documentation form approvals, just it was kind of hard to follow, sometimes it was an email, sometimes it wasn't signed, sometimes it wasn't complete. So just kind of just having a journal entry form and what the required documentation should be, and then someone approving it, again, that's the normal best practice. At the time I was doing this, the bank regulations were not being done on a monthly basis. This is kind of a critical, critical internal control, again, to kind of make sure everything makes sense and everything is reported somewhere. So, at least at that point, they weren't being done, so that's kind of, that's my number-one good rule as an auditor. I don't even start the audit until I have the bank recs, and I know they're all done. Because otherwise, I don't know what I'm, I don't have, I'm not comfortable with that I have is complete.
And we're doing it now, right?
Trained accounts can't function when the bank recs not done.
They can't sleep at night either.
So I'm not surprised that it's been corrected. Detail written policies and procedures, I know they're in the process, you have a lot of different positions, so, and unfortunately, you've had a lot of turnover, so this will just help facilitate as you get new people in. I know it's a process, but...
And cross-training's been important too.
And that too, yes. All right, health insurance, we'll request an analysis. They were under budget by 644 and 372 for the two fiscal years. Some of the recommendations was just, and maybe, again, has been corrected, it was very difficult to follow how the entries were recorded, because they were recorded, then reversed, and then another entry was done, so, and it was hard to follow. So it was just, as a potential recommendation, like, the line would be, here's the contribution to the service fund, and here's the other, because there are other medical costs that are not the contribution. So it was just a way to kind of maybe look at as a best practice, to be able to see, separate those.
Mitch?
If they were, these were under budget, run by $644,000, and run by $372,000, what happened to that money?
It was used to cover other lines that were in such a good position. So the whole budget transfer concept, they were under, something else was over, because those were some of the tighter years. So that money was used to cover over expenditures in other areas.
Okay. Thank you, I'm not making...
That kind of jumped in, that relates to the function transfers that we were talking about earlier, as far as, you know, doing a monthly true rope of what's happening with that. And that's, that's something that, you know, Rita's done a great job with, since she's been on board.
Yep.
What has been far more clear?
Because like, when we started, I don't know what to say, like, it was like a haze trying to understand where we were able to afford some things, and that being shared, like, the budget transfers and stuff. So that was like one of the things that, you know, we sort of looked at. So it's good now that, you know, Rita's in place, the policy's being reviewed, we're starting to get like a tighter control, so that we can monitor or understand where transfers are taking place. Because during the budget process, it was really difficult trying to understand, like, okay, where is this? Several members, you know, we're always asking about that, and looking forward to us being able to understand, because we had the same questions, whether it was this or other line items.
Anything else, Mitch?
Thank you.
All right, payroll, again, this is on exhibit five, where the details... So this is kind of just...
Oh, wait, excuse me, Joe, Jay has his hand up. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick observation. I know the board members are familiar with this, but because we're self-insured, you know, we have a fund which was designed to create surpluses, and the town finance director had a policy that covered the town, and we basically followed it. But once that surplus gets to a certain level, it had to be used. And I think it might be a misstatement to say that the surplus was used to pay for other things, but actually reduced the board's contribution to the insurance account. Otherwise, that surplus would continue to increase, and I know the town had a policy that those funds can make the board go certain amount. I don't really know if that closes things up or makes it muddier, but that's what happens when you're self-insuring and you have your own insurance fund. And it is denied every year. And it is benign to do it to generate a surplus, but as everybody knows, as we've learned a couple of years ago, there are years where it does not.
And that's when you need that surplus, when you're spending, you know, when your accounts.
Right, but that's mixing two different issues. You didn't spend it in the budget, it could be over here, that could be the reason, but then you didn't spend that money, that you didn't spend on insurance, on something else. So that was what my comment is, it's really independent.
Okay.
Anything else, Jay?
Nope.
I think that's enough.
All right, this, again, we'll talk about kind of the budget structure, which again, through the processes, different, just looking at the lines, some of them were overspent for salary, and some of them were under, total budget was fine, if you looked at exhibit one. So some of them were significantly under overspent for both years, so it was just kind of the comments, but just look at, if it's consistently one way or the other, it probably needs to be adjusted in total, and it all worked out at the end. But just from, again, from the board reporting and monitoring, it'd be helpful if this one's always over a million, this one's always under a million, then maybe the budgets need to be adjusted, if that's the way you're spending. Special ad, again, this was more a town request, I'm not sure any of this relates, but you do have significant volatility in this area, because of naval base and your location and that type of thing, so. So, from 2023 to 24, a decrease, you had positive variances in a couple different ones. Again, there were some consistent lines that swung the other way. Again, just to kind of look at, look at that, which should be budgeted if it's consistently one way, that maybe the budget should be lined up, so that's not showing this big variance. So property cost analysis, exhibit eight, so I guess this is an area that's causing some of the, I think, your budget problems in the past couple of years, just the amount of maintenance and things that need to get fixed. So for both fiscal years, nine or 10 of the lines were overspent, with the total budget for property costs being overspent by $68,000 and $143,000. So repairs the grounds was the biggest line that was overspent. So then, just reviewing some of the expenditures, and looking at the vendors, it looks like the property costs were charged to purchase services, that should be property costs, so it's just something to kind of look at for your budgeting, that things kind of get coded to where they should be recorded, so you have a good history of what it's actually costing you for these specific areas. We talked about it, the budget, the current direct line. School lunch, I don't know where you are at June 25, but you had $1.4 million on balance, it's a pretty good number. So once the free lunches started going away in 9/25, some of the districts started to struggle, so you probably don't have the same number, but you were in really good position in '24. And the program is paying for a lot of your employee benefit costs, except for pension, which is unusual, that you've been able to maintain that, so you get a lot of credit to be able to do that. Most of the benefit costs have been pushed back to the budget, in a lot of my clients, because the cafeteria operation just could not support it. So the fact that you're still able to do that, and being in a position, is definitely credit to the district. We talked about the tax ID number, which is now an odd issue. And again, for the processing, the school lunch, you know, functions like it's a whole separate company, so they should just follow all the policies and procedures, and that the Board of Ed does for every other operation, the general fund or every other fund. So all the checks go back to the cafeteria, best practice is the checks are cut, they're mailed, they don't go back to anybody. So again, they should just be following the same controls and policies and procedures as the rest of the district. And I didn't do, not like I did hundreds of transactions, but just by reviewing and looking at things, there were certain amounts that looked like they were charged to the wrong account, so. I was just based upon some work I did, or having other information. So it's just helping the departments understand what budget lines, where things should go, and training accounts payable to help with that process. If they get a bad account number, then they say, well, this is really this, if it's clear. The transfers to grant fund analysis, again, this was requested analysis, but the majority of costs, you know, reviewing, transferred work for technology, which is really what the DOD needs to be after. So ideally, the whole DOD grant spending would be part of the budget process, at least as a plan, and so that it would be factored in, and everybody would have a picture, we're going to spend a million dollars, or two million dollars on technology, a million dollars out of the budget, and a million dollars out of the grant. So just because that's kind of something that's more unique to Ron, yep. And the budget development support, we didn't really get, other than the Excel file, which had certain, the budget Excel file, certain analysis, there really wasn't other supporting documentation to be able to follow, what was developed, and what was included, and who was included, and that type of thing. So the best practice is, you know, all of the significant lines, we're going to have some sort of schedule, so for medical insurance, it's all the employees know or expect, and the plan they're in, that type of thing. So you have an A P, that's in there, statement salaries, and then there should be some sort of backup to how the number was developed, because that helps the next budget, and the next person who has to develop the budget, so.
You want to say what we've gotten this year? Because I think it's going to be really helpful.
Okay, yeah, I just want to say something about the health insurance. Because it's self-insured, typically, the third party administrator, who's M D G here, gives us our contribution total, so it's not really by employee, because we're double by employee, and they base it on the claims and all of that. So, I need to gain that contribution total, and show the backup, and put the budget figure, so that's all that they share. As far as positions, we are trying to implement position control, so on one of your sides, to track every single position in the district. So that is your backup to how the budget can be determined.
Right.
But I guess the Excel files versus having a budget tool.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Tomorrow, we kick it off tomorrow, the budget module. We're trying to implement an actual budget module, so that, you know, it's, the data's pulled from the finance, put into the module, and we're not just tabling, you know, Excel files, and trying to manually create a budget, basically.
Right, yeah, that's why I saw the spreadsheet, so yeah.
Yeah, just base spreadsheet, so.
Right, prone to.
Right, so.
When we went to do it, I said, this will make Ian stay. I said, let's do it.
I think, yeah, I think Joe talked to them, right, Joe talked to them, when I talked with him, he said that he had talked.
Mitch, is M D G also the same company that the town uses?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's pretty early. We usually don't get this information until we're already deep into.
We're not trying to get.
So we need this information ahead of time, so we're really grateful.
This is great.
We're seeing some good things happening.
Keep pushing.
Yeah.
All right, Jen.
All right, I think that was it.
That's it?
Yep, we talked about the budget, just again, there should be some sort of support to the major categories, so you have something to back up the numbers, and keep a little line going.
And we're going to be moving towards munis, it's going to take us a couple of years. We're doing it with the town, and they're going in the cloud too. We're kind of putting ourselves the lining.
All right.
And so that's really exciting, even using it as a tool for H R too, and so that they talk to one another. Now we have two different ones, and.
Let me open that to question.
Okay.
Adrian, I know you're listening.
No, I mean, I may, no. I mean, I guess I can ask, so these kind of issues that we have, like in accounting and stuff, is this somewhat common in school districts? Like, are we unique in the, you know, kind of the areas where we're missing some controls and things like that? Or is that, is it kind of a constant evolution statewide?
Yeah, I guess, I got to just say, it varies, sort of things like payroll clerks having access, and A P, all that is pretty common. Again, I know, some of these things I looked at, I don't look at, I don't look at a lot of the districts how they budget, because that's not part of the auditing, it's only in a process like this, where I would look at that. So I'd say a lot of what's here is common, in a sense. If I see it, it's a recommendation, so it gets, usually it gets addressed over a period of time, so.
All right. Yeah, it's a very gentle question.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard, there's not a lot that's radically different, other than, we'll say, school lunch, just because it was still functioning in a completely different way, but, and then some of the positions, like that one person who did 15 different things, again, that, understand how that happens, they've been here for 20 something years, and all that, so some of that's a little bit, we'll say, unique to the district, but that's because it was an individual, or just the process.
And then, I guess the other thing I was going to ask, and this was for Rita, but the school lunch, the register receipts, have we started to address that yet?
I'm addressing the fact that they have managers and directors at these sites, so what I was under the impression of is that the cash and the registers are being, you know, double-checked prior to coming to the county office. So we are looking into a voting setup, getting emails when they get deposits, so they use the school lunch program automatically, so instead of working the deposit when they see it on the bank, they make the deposit and they get the email, they get the email that this was deposited, and we make the deposit. So, yes, so I do encourage that in the address.
So is there actually any cash that, in schools, do the kids have?
Well, and I'm going to talk about that, because we're very far from cash, totally. And I thought it was going to be really, really hard.
Number and account now.
Well, I think they all collect cash, like.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
You know, because it's different.
What do you put about student activities with cash?
Students have cash, they're closely bonded to those bank statements and transactions as well, so.
So I'm having to pre-buy my tickets to games, so we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, it's a process, you know, I'm trying to move in that direction. All the changes.
I find it frustrating when I have to like go on my phone and put in a credit card to pay for things, but I understand why that's important.
It is important to them, because almost everybody does the way they pay.
Yeah.
Right, like the kids.
Different generation for sure.
Yeah, definitely, that's what I'm saying, like the kids, yeah. Yeah, Benmo.
Yeah, I know.
A lot of people ask me about Benmo, we haven't done that well yet, because of the complexity of where does it go when it gets here? Because there's so many different places it could go, right? So we, I've been talking with IT and talking with the service about Benmo, but.
I learned to Zillow, from my bank to my daughter's bank. Actually.
Jen, you have any questions? No. I'm a little city, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay. Jay, you have any more questions?
No, but thank you very much for coming out, and being willing to elucidate some of these issues that we have, we really appreciate it, and I'm thrilled to get things better organized this week overall. Thank you.
I think Joe thinks we're fixable.
Yeah, it sounds like you're already, you know, this is history right now, very way back to this, it's interesting to see your list, and what you already got through, so.
Mitch, you have any more questions, Mitch?
I think I asked enough tonight.
Do you have more, Phil, for, so on chat, Joe's not coming back again? It's like this one shot here.
I thought it was very comprehensive before.
Yeah.
Dean, you have any questions?
No, I'm also, I got a review answered that I had concerns about, and, you know, thank you for noting that it was a historical document, and we've been making good strides since the information was provided. Moving forward, policy, we're going to be using some of this. We did handle a lot of policy stuff, but we're going to handle it, just going to go back over the recommendations and see how well we did with making the revisions that we have, and see what's left to be done.
And I think Rita has some good recommendations too.
Yes.
For us, so.
Standing invitation to doing any policy.
We don't have any policy, we don't know who's going to be on policy, we'll have new committees probably, we'll take, I'll talk about that later.
And I do know that the recommendations, John Burt wants them back before the holidays, so we are working on a Google Doc, and taking every recommendation, and we have everything footnoted, and we're responding, and, you know, things that we, you know, we'll make sure the board gets a copy of that too, so you'll be able to see, you know, how we're doing, and keep track. We do a lot with Google Docs around here.
Anything else for us, Joe? Any comments you want to make? No? Okay. We thank you again.
Sure.
And I think that's the only thing on the agenda, was talking about discussing the operation with you, so I took a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
All right, Mitch. I have a second. It was seven, I'm going to say 7:05, we, Mitch made the motion, Adrian second. We are all those in favor of adjournment, thank you, Rita, thank you now. Thank you, Laurie, you didn't have to say anything, but I see your mind there, so thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome, have a good night, everybody.
You too. All those in favor of adjournment? Opposed, abstentions, yes, now adjourned.